All right, we'll kick it off this meeting on the Reading Municipal Light Board of Commissioners being held remotely on Zoom and streamed live on RCTV and YouTube. The RMLD Board of Commissioners
Recording in progress.
Recognizes the importance of hearing public comment at the discretion of the Chair on items of the official agenda. We ask that all questions or comments from the public be directed to the Chair and all parties, including members of the RMLD Board, act in a professional and curious manner when addressing the board corresponding to comments. But once recognized by the Chair, all persons addressing the board shall state their name and address prior to speaking. It is the role of the Chair to maintain order and all public comment for ensuing discussion. Commission to Pacino will be the Board Secretary. All right. And could I ask our remote participants to please identify themselves?
Mr. Pacino, present.
Mr. School, the President.
Marlena Bita, present.
Dave Talbot, present.
All right, great. Okay. We'll wait till the public comment section. If you could, Dennis, please, Citizens Advisory Board.
How's everybody doing?
Hi, Dennis.
You looking for an update about last meeting?
Yes, please.
Yep, we talked about the upcoming solar array plan and the hydro plan in our last meeting, and that's, you know, we approved it, and it'll be sent to you guys for approval next.
Okay. Great. I know myself and Phil attended the meeting, and it went, it went good. Hour and 12 minutes. There's your pace, boys. There's your pace, in girl. Okay. Can I ask if the liaisons to the RMLD Board, please, do you have any comments?
Hi, Jackie McCarthy, Finance Committee Liaison to RMLD Board. Just to thank Colleen and Erica for working with us to schedule a visit and presentation with the Finance Committee on March 23rd. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And we'll be looking for a public comment. Anybody? Seeing none. Can we continue to item number three? Phil, if you could, please.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve the meeting minutes of December 20th, 2021 meeting on the recommendation of the General Manager.
Any discussion? Great. All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, I.
Talbot, I.
I.
passing four zero. Okay. Approved. All right, moving on to item number four. Phil, if you could.
Okay, I'll make a motion again. Move that pursuant to Section 3.2 of the Operating Agreement of the Energy New England LLC, the Reading Municipal Light Department Board of Commissioners, hereby reappoints Colleen O'Brien as a Class B Director of the Energy New England LLC Board of Directors for a term of three years.
Any discussion?
How about a second?
A second. And if it could just be further explained to me what it means
Yep.
to be appointed.
Colleen, if you could, please.
Yes, so we are 8% owner of Energy New England. And so this is a motion for me to continue on as a Board of Director representing the RMLD as an owner. We are owner and a member.
Thanks.
Chair, I have a quick question.
Yes, please.
So did ENE has, has public meetings itself, right?
Correct.
So like, like we have our board meeting right now, they have their own board meeting.
Correct.
And you would be a board member in that context?
I am, I have. Yes.
In other words, you're sitting on the DAS and deciding on ENE's policies, which then kind of loops back since they have so much say over or do a lot of work for us, I should say. I guess, I guess what I'd like to ask and see if what people think is, could we get like some at our meeting before your meetings?
Okay.
Like, what's the agenda at ENE? So that we're aware of what it is you are considering, you know, as a board member at ENE doing. So we have like a cycle ahead of that to kind of weigh in if we, if we so, if we'd like to.
Absolutely. I can even send you the most recent board meeting agendas and maybe at the next meeting, kind of give you an update. I can do that. That's fine.
That'd be great. And are those, are those on Zoom, even if they're in person? Or are they, are they, like, can anybody go in on a Zoom like this, like we can on this?
Yes, I believe so. Yes. It's, the board is made up of the owner GMs. And in addition to that, there's private entities as well that are board members that do not belong to ENE. So.
Do we need to move, make a, like a motion on that to that effect? Or is it just understood that we'll get?
It has to get approved and then it gets signed and.
No, I mean, I mean, the idea of you telling us a meeting ahead, what's on the agenda? And us having kind of a.
Yeah, well, when they send me the agenda, I can forward it to you guys. And if you want to come, you can, you can just extend the invite. They're open meetings. There's, there's commissioners that sometimes attend or, you know, chime in. It's still hybrid.
Yeah.
I really haven't gone down. I've been taking them virtually just because of the COVID issue so far. But I'm sure they'll probably be rolling into in person soon. But they'll probably keep hybrid. I think that's going to be the way of the future. Make it easy on people.
Is it monthly or quarterly or?
Quarterly.
Quarterly, okay. So I guess I would just propose that more than just sending us the agenda like that at our, at the meeting before the quarterly meeting, it's on our agenda that you will discuss what's on the ENE agenda.
Okay.
That would be four times a year that you'd just be letting us know for five minutes what's going on at ENE.
Okay.
Would that be okay?
Yeah, it is. It's just I don't always get the agenda in time to, you know, I can send it to you, but it might not be able to present it at our board meeting because I might not get it until after our board meeting.
I see.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, I do. I do. I do know what you mean. So that represents a challenge, right? Because you might be voting on important things that ENE is doing, but we don't know anything about it.
Um. I suppose, except that, you know, what I bring forth is in, you know, I'm representing the RMLD, our mission statement, our visions, our policies. There isn't anything different than that that I'm, I'm bringing. So that's all I'm bringing to the table.
Right.
So.
Yeah. I mean, we did encounter a little glitch last year. I think we'll all recall in terms of what ENE was doing and we were part of that we didn't know. So that's kind of where this is coming from, but I'll leave it there.
I understand.
Maybe to address what Dave's looking for, maybe on a regular quarterly basis, you give us an update on ENE.
Yes.
You know, we did, we just make that a regular quarterly thing on the agenda.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, on a related note, Erica had let us know that there's an open meme meeting on March 16th at 10:30 that we could attend in Littleton or on Zoom. And in the same vein as the ENE meetings, they are usually open to commissioners and we can go and they encourage us to come. So. 10:30 in the morning, not at night. That came up last time.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Is there a second?
I think, yeah, I think Marlena seconded it.
You seconded it, all right, okay. All those in favor?
I.
Talbot, I.
Hold your pass. Okay. Continuing on. Colleen, if you could, underneath the agenda.
General Manager report?
Yes, please.
Okay. So first, let's just talk about the storm. We do, we did our storm meeting. We have crews coming in at 1:00 AM, including control authorities. Joyce did send out a memo to everyone that we're activating the liaison phone, I believe, at either 1:00 or 4:00 AM. I'm going to have to go back. I think we rolled it back to 1:00 AM.
1:00.
1:00, okay. So. And that's the same thing that we do. So in case, you know, town managers and stuff like that, that are, that are not calling the police and fire line can, can get ahold of us. So we're expecting, what, it might be up to 12 inches. So we are still have the building open tomorrow. I guess I'll make that decision tomorrow. We have some people working remote and we have skeleton crew here, except for operations who are full staffed. I just wanted to talk a second about the supply chain. He's going to probably talk about that at our next meeting. But just so you know, I mean, they've done a really good job making sure that we have spare parts and we've been ahead of the supply chain. But I think we all realized that eventually it was going to catch up to us. So in March, we're going to be presenting the transformer bid, and we're already being told that that's going to be a two-year wait. So Hamed and his staff are going to look at that. We're going to look at the impact, right? So right away, we've been talking about transformer inspections and replacements, you know, that are end of their useful life. I mean, I think, you know, things like that are going to move a little bit. So we'll continue the inspections. Anything that might be showing signs of leaking or degrading will replace. But we may push off and have to switch gears a little bit as far as making sure that our stock remains intact for potential emergencies or other things. So whatever is going to come out of that, Hamed can give a presentation next month. So it's going to affect most equipment. Of course, that's just one of our main ones that that's going to have a pretty big impact on how we shift the workload that we've got presently scheduled. Any questions on that? Okay. Um. We had the vehicle webinar on February 1st. We had about 80 attendees. Mr. Talbot served as the panelist, did a great job. The recording was shared last, in the last newsletter, and you can, it's available on the website and YouTube if you want to check it out. The elementary art contest awards is still going to be virtual. The carpet and the paint in the AV room are completed. We're working on trying to finalize some specifications for the AV equipment so that we can run hybrid in the spring. And so we're still moving forward for that. But I think with the COVID and just lifting some of the masking and stuff, I think with all of those children in the third grade, I think we're still going to run it virtual. And we're going to do that on March 3rd at 7:00 and March 10th at 7:00. And we've gotten some volunteers and I had also offered it to the CAP. That's always a fun event, watching the kids with their, with their drawings. The high school art contest has also kicked off. You've got a press release that we sent out last week. The artwork is due on March 25th. The theme, as I've mentioned in the past, is versatility, which we'll dovetail into our annual report. And that art contest is always super fun to participate in voting on. And that artwork, as you remember from last year, can be quite inspirational. So we're looking forward to that and usually becomes our cover for our annual report. So Joyce and I, we had another meeting this morning with the directors to go over the annual report, which will be published in the spring after the audit is completed, the financial audit. Just want to give you a heads up that the format's going to be a little bit different this year. Instead of seeing accomplishments and stuff by divisions, it's time now to integrate everyone. So it'll be organized more by topic. And I think you'll enjoy reading it. It'll have a different feel, a different format to it. But I think it will feel very holistic and it will expand on our, the RMLD's versatility. We do still need a picture of Marlena for the board page. If you have one that you like, you can send it in or we can have you come in and Joyce can take a picture. So whatever you, whatever you'd like, we can, you can work with Erica and we can arrange that. Um, the economic development meeting. Some of you participated in the tour. So again, a reminder of why we were doing that. We kind of put our master plan for the, for the 230 Ash Street Campus, fixing buildings and stuff to just very high level. And we want to get back to that master plan, but we want to ask the town to speak with the board about what is going to happen on 230 Ash Street. There's a number of visions that are on the town's website. And we just want to, I wanted to help facilitate that conversation between the two boards. So the first step we took was invited everybody on a tour so they could see our building, our layout, the Barbis Building that we rent, Station One, which is the old generating station, and then our operations area where all our linemen and trucks sit. So to try to get an idea of the lay of the land so that we could have a discussion about, you know, is this area going to go forward with economic development? Are we staying? Are we leaving? What's happening? So that was the first step to facilitate that conversation. I know Karen had asked for some daytime dates and times, but that didn't really work for a lot of people. So I think she's going to continue on that doodle pole to see if we can't come up with something, but there isn't anything as of today. Erica, do you have any update on that? But.
Um, yeah, just add, so Karen had requested along with just like where the meeting be in the daytime. And I had reached out to you all about if that worked. And it seemed like there was some mixed kind of reviews if daytime would work or not. So I can circle back with Karen to let her know that we might need to look into some evenings to just accommodate everyone's schedule. And then I'll send out the doodle pole.
Okay. As Jackie mentioned, we, we are going to, Wendy and I are going to present at the FinCon meeting, at their meeting on March 23rd. And right now, the agenda for us will be both the FERC training that Wendy's going to give in a little bit later, along with the payment of the LOA tax calculation. So those are the two things on the agenda. And we've asked Jackie if she wants to add anything. Just let us know and we'll be happy to put together some slide presentations for whatever topic. And I think that's all I have for the update. Oh, the cultural survey. So we, we hired Cultural Solutions to do that last effort under the 2014 reliability study where we had the customer survey. Now we're doing the employee survey and we are in the, we are signing, hopefully signing the contract on Monday. And so she'll be coming in to give a kickoff presentation about how Cultural Solutions does employee surveys all the way through to training, including leadership training, probably in March. So we're just, we finalized the scope this week. And so hopefully sign contract next week and kickoff presentation. And then you'll be told how it's going to be run. You can have input to the questions and, and we can move forward from there. And I think that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. For the sake of time, would anybody have any issue if we went out of order? And we went to item number six and seven before we addressed number, number five, policy review? Okay, hearing notes. Okay, so why don't we go right into item number six?
Great.
Greg, you ready?
Yep.
Ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay, move that the Board of Commissioners on the recommendation of the Citizens Advisory Board, vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to contract with Bereo, just butchered that name, for energy in Class 1 certificates from a to-be-built 109-megawatt solar project near Berlin, New Hampshire, known as Milan, Mylan Lane, Mylan Road, pending environmental justice review.
Right.
Do you want to block you guys?
Yeah, yes, yeah. Does it, does it right?
Second first, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing a second?
Second.
Okay, Greg, if you could, please.
Great, okay, so this is a power supply addition, obviously it's solar, solar PV. This particular ray is, Phil mentioned, it's up in, it's called Milan Road. It's up in northern New Hampshire, Berlin. It's north of Mount Washington. Borrego Energy is the developer. They've got a lot of experience. One of the things we look for in terms of EPC companies is their experience with solar programs. This particular one is a single axis tilt. If you look at that picture in the top of the screen here. You guys can see my screen, right?
Yes.
All right, so, so this axis right along here is basically a single axis tilt. So in the morning, it tilts toward the east. And then in the evening or late afternoon, it tilts towards the west. The intention behind that is to maximize or make sure that the rays are as perpendicular to the radiance of the sun, at least in terms of that axis as possible. That has, that has benefits in terms of increasing the output for an existing capital cost. One of the things that we looked at from a risk management perspective is, you know, we've got moving pieces in a solar array. This particular case, since we're buying output as opposed to, so it's a contingent output. It's in the developers and the operators' interest to always make sure that that, those single axis trackers work all the time and it's in our benefit as well. So from that perspective, we look at this from a reliability perspective. It looks good. This particular one is, as you mentioned there, it's 109. So it's utility scale, 109 megawatts AC. We would take, this is a program that is being proposed by ENE. Some of the projects that we present to you, we're 100% of the output. This particular case, we're a smaller portion of the output. It gets shared between the various ENE members, as Colleen mentioned before. This particular one, we would end up taking about 35,000 megawatts, megawatt hours a year, which is about 5% of our current portfolio. This is a 25-year contract, which means as we go forward in time, it'll become a decreasing piece of our portfolio as our load increases and our power pushes as increases. Remember that nice graph back in the December and January meetings to kind of walk through our strategy. This fits in very nicely. It is, the commissioning is meant to be in, in the early part of 2025. Realistically, the supply chain issues that Hamed and Colleen mentioned earlier are hitting the panel world as well. So we're, we're kind of anticipating based on discussion with the ENE that while they're going to shoot for the first quarter, the reality is we probably won't get power until the fourth quarter. That's the term. It does have Class 1 certificates. Obviously, since it's solar, it's renewable and non-carbon. In terms of pricing, we had a little bit of a pricing discussion. So relative to our portfolio average right now, it's, it's, it's actually very well priced. So typically, solar and renewables are in the range of 75%, maybe 80% higher than our average before you do any discounts relative to potential certificate sales. Anyways, this one is, is lower priced, partially due to the fact that it's a single axis tracker. So just to kind of give you an idea, you guys know from all of our discussions we've had over the past year, relative to our traditional portfolio that still had renewable and non-carbon mixed in it. As we go forward in time, larger and larger portions of it are going to be non-carbon. And so solar is going to fit into it. So obviously, there's upward price pressure. One of the, in terms of the average cost of, of power for our portfolio. I made a commitment to the CAB and I'll do the same thing to you guys as well. I will, I will have as part of these presentations kind of a simple graph that goes out over time in terms of how the price looks when we take into all factors of what the LMP forecast is and what these individual contracts look like as well, with and without certificates. I think the end of the day, it's the kind of analysis that we do anyways. But you know, programs like this, this particular deal is a particularly good one for solar. It's well-priced. Any questions? The one other thing I would mention that we talked about before is geographically, this one is, is in the northern part of New Hampshire. One of the things that we looked at, that we continue to look at for all of our generation sources is their geography. We try and spread them around. So if there's any particular issues in one geographic territory, it doesn't have a, you know, we did part of risk management, doesn't have a significant negative impact on our overall reliability of our network from a power purchase perspective in terms of the power coming in. So that's one other quite piece. So a lot of the stuff we try and do is in the southern part of New England. This one's in the northern part. It's a nice balance. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, is there an alternative to the single axis tilt besides maybe like a rotating or something access?
Yeah. Yeah. My name, this particular, so normally the arrays would be, so as you look at this angle, the sun basically is coming along the axis of it. And so they tend to tilt the, they've got the tilt in this axis relative to the sun if it's coming over my shoulder to be maximized. And then the east to west rotation. It, it, it's single axis, which is good, not, not a lot of, you know, as opposed to, they have some dual axis ones, which literally always, you know, rotate in a, in two axis. See, this one, just one axis. The two axis ones tend to have a little bit more problematic. We try not to do a lot of, of any kind of axis rotation. But in this particular site with this particular configuration, the, it, it, it seemed, and the way the contract is written, the developer is motivated to make sure that that axis, that those mechanisms run all the time. And it's part of the reason why the price is particularly good. Because it, it gets more energy early in the day and more energy late in the day. So for their capital investment panels, they get more energy output, which is a win for them and a benefit for us.
Thanks.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, Greg, when you mentioned spreading the risk around, is that, is that literally because of like cloud banks passing over New England or?
Could be, it, yeah, it could be anything. I mean, it could be cloud thunderstorms, it could be transmission lines down. It could be anything. Because if, if that supply is down, then we're basically buying market in an LMP basis, which typically is, well, it's going to be, it's forecasted and it's likely to be higher than what we're paying for this. So it's a negative. If one of these goes down, we don't want everything to be concentrated in one geographic area for either clouds or transmission or, you know, I won't say fire. I mean, it could be all sorts of different things. But that's why we kind of spread risk around, not only in terms of the type, you know, solar versus wind versus hydro versus nuclear, but also in terms of geography spread. Risk, it's just basic risk management. You're right.
Thanks.
Yeah, Greg, my, my question is, I need you to give me further clarification because I think the, the 45% higher came up during the CAB meeting too. I don't think I quite understood, you know, what that means. I mean, we're going to pay 45, 45% higher in cost or what exactly does that mean?
So what that, what is that meant to be in terms of? As we look at the average of our dollars per megawatt hour purchased. So we have our, our standard portfolio, right? And right now, the portfolio has a bigger piece of primarily what we call mixed historically. A mixed, mixed in New England is natural gas. So as natural gas gets, so right now, you know, roughly about half of our portfolio is natural gas and the other half is renewables. So our, our average for 2021 is X dollars per megawatt hour. It'll be actually in the annual report. It's, it's a so it'll be, it'll be stated in the annual report. The, this particular one is typically when we do solar projects, the dollars per megawatt hour are 80% higher than our, our overall average portfolio cost. The implication, the reason why we put that down is in the context of the 2021 climate law and the associated policy 30 that we put in place, we are migrating our portfolio to, by 2050, to be completely non-carbon. And the non-carbon, the cost of non-carbon, particularly when the non-carbon is retiring, not selling the associated certificates, the price of that energy that comes out of non-carbon resources is going to be higher than traditional, than traditional natural gas. Going forward in time, there's, there's what is probably going to happen is that the natural gas, a good portion of the natural gas generation will be retired. And the remaining part of it will basically be in standby mode to, from a reliability perspective, so that if it's, if it's no wind and cloudy rainy in, in August, where we've got a minimal output for solar and hydro and, and wind, that those natural gas facilities would be called on to run. Typically, they might run, if you think about 80, so 8,760 hours a year. Some natural gas engines are running at, you know, 4,000 or 5,000 hours a year. In the future, they might be running 500 hours a year or 1,000 hours a year. They still need to be paid for from a capital perspective and an operating cost perspective. So they're going to be part of the portfolio. So there's going to be a, so those, what is currently fairly inexpensive natural gas fuel, as we get into the future, 2040, 2050, they'll be, they'll be probably more expensive than the renewables. But right now, this, this particular project. This this particular project is about forty five percent higher. On a dollar per megawatt basis relative to the two thousand and twenty one portfolio average. That help?
Yes, it does, yep.
I I have a, we've got a chart that we put together that basically looks at now each project, but I'll I'll have that for the next one, because then it'd be really clear to see. Market prices going up. And our 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 net costs, our average dollars per megawatt hours going up. But it's below market price and it's also not going up as quickly, which is one of the benefits of us doing these. Longer term contracts and also filling out our portfolio. Filling out more of it when we get into the two thousand and thirty s and two thousand and forty perspective, but I'll I'll bring that to you guys next time around.
Thank you, Greg. Are there any more comments in terms? Okay. All those in favor? Ms. Pacino, I.
Talbot, I.
Marlena Vida, I.
Mr. Colter, I. Passes four zero. Okay. Second. Motion, the hydro addition to power supply.
Moved at the Board of Commissioners and on recommendation of Citizen Advisory Board. Vote to accept the General Manager's recommendation to contract with First Light. For energy and class two certificates. From existing hydro facilities known as. Sheepog. And Stevenson, pending environmental justice reviews.
Alright, so you nailed it. Excellent. Alright.
Second. Second.
Excellent. Or any further discussion? Greg, we got Greg to talk?
So so here's the quick summary on this one, this is hydro, obviously. In this particular case, this our existing hydro facilities, they're in Connecticut, so southern part of the state. We currently have contracts that expire in two thousand and twenty four. This is a six year extension that'll go into two thousand and thirty. We're gonna, we'll have an opportunity to take a little bit more of the percentage, this too. This also, like the previous one, would be. And unlike the gravity ones, the gravity ones, we tend to do a hundred percent, this one will take, we're taking a percentage of it. Because it's being organized by E and E, it's an existing contract that we want to extend. This, so the, I'll walk you through a little bit of characterization here in just a second. But the volume here that we would be, our allocation of it would be about twenty five thousand megawatt hours a year. Again, that's about four percent of our. Current snapshot. As we go forward in time, that twenty five thousand will be a smaller percentage of the overall, because we'll end up buying, you know, right now, we're. We're buying just under, so we're buying about six hundred and ninety thousand megawatt hours a year, roughly seven hundred thousand megawatt hours a year. That number will increase over time, we we talked about that in the past two meetings, what that chart looks like. We would love this contract to go out further, but First Light is only willing to do a six month extension for the whole group of us. It has, it has. Main class two certificates, it has them right now, it'll continue to have them going forward, they're renewable and non-carbon, they they fulfill our. Requirements for for compliance. In fact, you'll see in just a moment that we'll be retiring for the third quarter of two thousand and twenty one, some main class two certificates. They're currently valued about eight dollars a certificate, that's a little background. This particular one. Again, the same basic concept we talked about before in terms of looking at the snapshot in time of price. This particular hydro is lower than our average hydro, if we take all the hydros together. This basically brings the average of hydro down, but hydros tend to be higher than than our average portfolio right now, so it's about fifty percent higher. But but we like this one in particular for two reasons, it's existing, it's got the existing main class two certificates. We will still go through as we put in the motion, we will do a, even though it's existing project, existing. The renewal, we will do an environmental justice review like we've done for the gravity ones. That third bullet down here, which talks about ponding capability, the reason why that's important, it 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 creates the potential for additional value for all of the entitlement holders like us, if we enter this contract. And they're doing it right now for us. It basically allows them to shift the output by by hours. And not not by days, not by seasons, but that. In that picture here in the back, you see a large, a large area, so it's a large. Body of water behind it, and this particular capability, they have. The permission to, as they let more or less water flow through the generators, it'll basically adjust the water level. So they have the flexibility to to let that water level within reason to go up and down a bit, which allows them basically to. Increase the generation during peak hours, and that peak hours has benefits to us because of the way they get moved. The way they get reconciled through ISO New England. The more generation during the peak hours, there's a higher value. Of L M P prices, we're paying a contract price here, they're selling the pipe, the the value up here. It's part of the settlement program that goes through ISO New England, anyways, it's a benefit to us, that ponding capability. It, this particular facility does not have the capability, there's not enough ponding, that reservoir is not big enough. To take what is a high spring runoff and shift it to the August timeframe. This one still has a typical high in the springtime and then it dips in August before it starts, you know, refilling in higher flows, we get into the winter months tied to the rainy season or the the winter season. All said and done, it has a, it has a profile in terms of output that's complementary to the solar one. But most importantly for this one, it's a known entity, First Light, it doesn't, they're strong. Operator and it's got a good price point, this particular one is a very good price point for hydro. Questions?
Okay. Hearing done? Okay. Put a vote. Ms. Pacino, I.
Marlena Vida, I.
It's called the right.
Talbot, I. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to. Item number seven.
Oh, join it, okay.
Where you want to go now?
I could, I can just finish off these other. Three quick, the two battery and the certificates, or you want to just move?
No, you, yeah, those were good, the battery, battery was actually good, I'm sorry, Greg.
No, no, it's okay, I'll stay synchronized, so this is just a quick, quick report and update, so. Obviously, when we put together. Last year, the procedures and policies associated with our certificate management under policy thirty. One of the, one of the responsibilities that we have to report back to you as the Board of Commissioners. Is each quarter, what the status is of the certificates. This snapshot is for the third quarter of two thousand and twenty one, so it was last fall. As you guys remember, the way the process works, that's. One certificate to one megawatt hour coming from a non-carbon and and you know, either hydro, solar, wind, et cetera. That six month window for third quarter is, we're in the middle of that now, it's basically January fifteenth to May fifteenth, so we're in the middle of it, so we were making decisions on these, just like we've done the past two quarters. You'll notice that that fifty nine thousand is a pretty similar number in terms of what gets acquired each quarter. That's because it's tied to the longer term contracts that we have in place, you'll see occasionally some ups and downs based on the seasonal output of it and when contracts open and close, but. Right now, between second quarter of last year and third quarter of last year, it's it's pretty similar, right around fifty nine thousand. Obviously, I should, I should walk through, so that we have the opening balance, remember, we have a a pattern and a habit of. Of not reading, of not either selling or retiring at the end of each quarter, but keeping a a little buffer, so we have the opening balance of roughly thirty six hundred certificates. From the second quarter of two thousand and twenty one, we've acquired roughly about fifty nine thousand more. We are in the process, again, per the policy, to retire. In the quarter when we can. The twenty three, in the case of two thousand and twenty one, the twenty three percent, which ties into. The amount of certificates for the specific to the third quarter. Of two thousand and twenty one, that's that forty three thousand, so we are, we're in the process of retiring those. And then the difference, the balance that's left over. We split into two buckets, normally it's eighty percent we sell and twenty percent we hold. In this particular case, because Seabrook facility. The last October was their every eighteen month cycle to refuel, it wasn't generating effects while the contract requires Seabrook to provide power to us. If they're doing refueling, there's no associated certificate, so what we're doing this particular quarter is only selling seventy percent. Leaving us with thirty percent of the bucket left over. That allows us some flexibility in the fourth quarter, if we need to have a little bit more for retirement, because we have fewer effects in the third and fourth quarter. Anyway, so we're just balancing that out, that's really the only difference between the. What we did in the second quarter and the third quarter, it's just meant to be a a simple snapshot in the report. Any questions? Okay. I'm gonna, I'm gonna shift gears and move through two projects fairly quickly, we talked in December about battery. We indicated that we're we're looking to add batteries to our portfolio. Additional ones, we already have one right now, this picture in the upper right hand corner. Is the existing Minuteman system that is in place right now. That was part of the grant program from three years ago. You guys remember from batteries, and I'll just remind everybody. That battery, that battery systems are intended, batteries, so storage systems, but battery systems are intended to reduce peak loads. Remember that our, in our cost structure, capacity and transmission represent about forty percent of the total cost structure of R M L D, the big pieces. And we have in place a peak management program of which the batteries, the existing battery is part of it. To reduce our load during peak hours. So we're in effect, storage systems do not generate electricity, they only time shift. And this little chart down here in the bottom. Is basically, this is, this is a load, this is our actual load from last August. And so you can see the load was going up. And this down here, this blue line and this this yellow line are the. The battery and the generator that we run during those peak hours, and you can see at the end of the day, we drive the peak down. At the load, our capacity and transmission costs are calculated, are basically calculated on. The capacity, what what our load was during the capacity peak, which is one hour for the entire year. And in the case of transmission, the one hour of transmission peaks, so it's a very important. Part of our energy management system. To our cost management, I should say, to put battery systems in. The key thing that that we kind of knew was coming down the road back in December, which has actually now happened. Is that. Basically, at the FERC level, the reconstitution. Threat, overhanging concern was removed, which was tied to five megawatts per circuit, that's no longer a constraint. So we're, we're going to move fairly quickly to try and get another. System into Station Three, into the existing Station Three. I mean, I've been working together with our respective teams to to look at the layout and the costs associated with it. Our intention is not to buy this asset, our intention is to do what we did with the original asset. Which is do it under an energy storage agreement or an energy services agreement, so it fits very much like power supply. We're going to coordinate as we get in, we're not, we're trying to get you, you're ready, so that at the next meeting, we can. Present this, we just need to make sure that we've got some numbers together, we coordinate with the purchasing team. At the end of the day, this particular system for Station Three will probably net about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually for the next fifteen years, this would be a fifth, this would be basically. Adding to the existing portfolio. I'm going to kind of jump over to a related one, again, this is kind of information for you guys. This would be another battery system, another five megawatt, ten megawatt, ten megawatt system. But this particular one, this example is one that would be tied to an existing solar system. That picture in the upper right hand corner is a solar array that exists right now, it's what's driving our solar choice two program. The developer, which is Versage Energy, it's a Boston based, in New England, what's Massachusetts, but Boston based company. They are proposing to add a. Five megawatt, ten megawatt hour. System, stored system to this particular site. Again, it would be the same basic structure that would be doing under a energy storage agreement. So shared savings structure in this particular case, it would be, it would be no, we're not doing a purchase here. It'd be a services deal. The structure of this one, it looks like, based on the initial analysis, it will come through at around three hundred thousand dollars a year over across twenty years, a little different structure. Part of it's given the fact that it's tied to solar. We'll give you a little bit more details at the next one, but just wanted to give you guys a heads up. You're you're probably in your other circles hearing a lot of the M L Ps and the I U S for that matter. Are now kind of accelerating their. Adoption of of battery systems. What we had mentioned to you back in December, that we're looking somewhere between twenty five and thirty megawatts of of battery storage systems within the next two years or by two thousand and twenty four, realistically. One would be tied to a substation that we talked about with, that I mean, you'd mentioned. A couple of sessions ago, anyways, we wanted, we want to kind of set the stage, let you guys know that the different issues that we're looking at, safety being one of them. How we structure it so that it that it it fits under the the power supply structure. And what the net, the net benefit to R M L D and why, so those are. Kind of hit a lot in those two slides, are two different kind of configurations, questions, no motion yet, we'll do the motion in the future, but I want to give you. Let you know that we're making progress on these two projects, any questions? Okay. I might, I'm gonna jump to the the last one. This is, again, one of the the power supply strategies that we've been talking about is within territory generation. Right? It's this first, you know, within our territory have more generating assets. We have to do it from a compliance perspective, but as we mentioned before. Like storage can do, can reduce our peak loads, solar and other kind of generation assets can reduce our peak loads, which. Reduces our transmission and capacity costs, those are key pieces. In the case of solar, unlike batteries, solar is. The generator, it has benefits over the course of the day, not just during the peak hours. What we're, what we're going to do, so this is part of the E E C fund, which is the electrification and efficiency. Charge that we talked about last August, went from a tenth of a cent to three tenths of a cent. We have, we have dollars allocated to residential programs and dollars allocated to commercial programs. In the past, the commercial programs have been the majority of those E E C expenditures. Or they use call it E C C, but anyways, of those of that fund. But obviously, last year, in the middle of the summer, we had announced this early in the year, but it was time to discontinue the lighting incentive program. The reason why we discontinued the lighting incentive program is that there was no longer a choice, all the lights that would be available. With the exception of specialty lights were already L E D, so there we weren't. Then the idea behind the incentive, when it started many, many years ago, the lighting incentives was to encourage people to spend a little bit more. For L E D, primarily lights, when they used to be more expensive and and a choice. That choice is now gone, they're they're affordable, so we discontinued that program there. We have efficiency related programs that are primarily under the custom bucket. But we wanted to provide some additional dollars for the C N I customers. Incentive to encourage them to do solar programs. So what we're going to do is we're going to increase the current limit, this is a current program we already have in place right now, we're going to increase it from fifty thousand dollars max up to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar max. That links to basically making the incentive down here of twelve hundred dollars per K W. Which is what we put in place last September for the residential sites, the two will match. The the benefit in terms of providing these incentives to the rate payers, it's basically a payback within eight to ten years, so it's worth doing. In terms of storage, remember we talked about storage previously, battery. We we want to encourage storage, but with a mechanism that we're going to use to encourage storage is the P P A rates that we would accept. Or and or the shared saving programs that we wouldn't be willing to accept, as opposed to having a specific. Dollar amount tied to battery systems, we might do that in a year or two from now, once the battery prices stabilize a bit. But we're gonna, we want to encourage storage, but more importantly, we want to encourage the solar with storage. So all said and done, in terms of the action plan, we're going to increase the incentive from six hundred to twelve hundred dollars per K W. We're going to increase the limit to, we're still keeping it fifty percent, we're going to let it go up to a hundred and twenty thousand as a maximum. And in this particular case, unlike the other incentives that we have in place, we're actually going to put a cap on this one, we'll go back and look at it at the end of the year. But we're going to basically limit it to be the first nine hundred and sixty thousand, if we, if we have that many applications for it, but we want to put a cap on it. Because these are bigger blocks, we want to make sure that. We're being, we're being prudent with these dollars at the end of the day, it does fit within the budget that we've, we've got allocated for two thousand and twenty two. And our intention is to make it effective immediately, so I just wanted to give you guys a heads up of what we're trying to do with the E E C. Budget, how we're trying to increase the the incentive for more solar within our territory and the benefits behind it, any questions on that topic? Okay, that's it, that's quick update for me, thank you for the support on the power supply and we'll, we'll bring more. More details on the battery system at the next presentation, so thank you. I will.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, there you go, stop sharing, there we go.
Always, always informative.
So what?
Always informative.
Oh, oh. I thought it's something else.
Oh. No bad words, well good. Item number seven, FERC accounting, training. Excellent, thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, good evening.
Thank you, good evening. So I'm, based on the presentation of the budget, I believe a lot of questions came up about some of the. Recording and, and how it. How we get to where we get, so this is why this presentation is. Important tonight, but hold on to your hats because it's extremely exciting. Okay, so just so you understand, financial reporting and the compliance that we have to follow here. First and foremost, GAAP, which is your generally accepted accounting principles. And that is the foundation for approved accounting methods and standards, and that is how you get, basically that's your training and your degree. Your accounting degree, and then they also can teach you governmental accounting standards board, which is your GASB. Accounting reporting standards for state and local governments, they are teaching that now in colleges. FERC, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Is not. So that's something when you work in a utility, it's self taught and, well, self learned and, you know, we work to train each other. Within the municipality world and of course, we have our handy FERC book. Which is very rarely updated, just so you understand, it is a uniform system of accounts for public utilities. Now, the specific FERC chart of accounts is dictated based on. What type of organization you're running, so we are basic, we are mainly a distribution company. So just so you understand, some of the chart of accounts do not fall in line with corporate accounting. So assets and other debits, your one hundred accounts, liabilities and other credits, two hundreds. Plant accounts are separated by the three hundred accounts, that's not typical for corporate accounting. Other income and expenses. Pieces of the four hundred accounts, retained earnings, four hundred, also not typical, sales of electricity. Accounts, your four forty to four sixty. And then your expenses, your production, transmission and distribution expenses are your five hundred accounts. And specifically, the administrative expenses, customer accounts, customer service, sales, your nine hundred accounts. So just so you understand, the common FERC plant account, so when we present the capital budget and Hameed goes over every project. Every, every project that, that we construct here has to be properly. Reported so that when we file our Department of Public Utilities return, we're capturing all of our plant appropriately. So it's a very comparative. Information for all municipalities to use and we use it throughout the year for many different reasons. So distribution in particular are your. Starts off with the land three sixty, and then you're talking about your substations and the structures, improvements and equipment. Three sixty-one, two, and battery storage, then you get into your poles, towers and fixtures of three sixty-four. Overhead conductors and devices which kind of go hand in hand, three sixty-five, and then your underground can do it. Conductors and devices, three sixty-six and sixty-seven. Then you have your transformers, your standalone transformers and standalone meters. This transformers and meters are the only two assets that get capitalized immediately when they hit our grounds. Doesn't matter when they're placed in service, we depreciate them right away. General plant is your, three eighty-nine is your office, so your office building. And the land that we have here, structures, improvements. Three ninety-one, office furniture and equipment, so that's a very broad category. So because like I said, FERC doesn't update very often. In the last ten years, you know, computer hardware and software became very relevant with automation. So even though it belongs under three ninety-one, we have separated on our books, so we can really keep track of the, the expense because it is worth. Understanding the expense, so three eighty-two, three eighty-three, you'll notice on our capital projects. Three ninety-two is our transportation, all our fleet. Three ninety-four is your tool shops and garage equipment, now that's significant cost, just so you understand, it's not small hand tools. Three ninety-five is your laboratory equipment, any kind of testing equipment. Three ninety-six power operated equipment, power operated tools, you know. Any kind of. Chainsaw, for example, three ninety-seven communication equipment, which is your FiOS, your fiber optics. So this is an example of the capital project, so I wanted to give you a snapshot, so you can kind of follow along when I'm. What I'm explaining here, so the, the Wilmington substation, so. The FERC accounting, yeah, is, is, there's a lot of different accounts that we hit with each project, so when we. When we put it here for viewers to understand, even within our own organization here, when the engineers are recording their time. And the linemen, they have to understand exactly what category to record it under. So we capture the best categories we can, they're not all inclusive, just so I understand, so if an invoice hits my desk. And so I, I, I review every capital invoice. It hits my desk and I may realize, you know, it, the FERC account's not listed here, but it, there is another FERC account to charge, so I do charge it appropriately. So the land is three sixty and then you have your construction and commissioning. Three sixty-one and three sixty-two is specific to the substation. Three sixty-six and three sixty-seven is specific to underground construction. And then you have three sixty-four, three sixty-five, which is your overhead. And your poles, and the same right here, three sixty-five, your distribution. So another project, to give you a different example, the grid modernization and optimization, which is a lot of software and automation, right, so three sixty-five. Which is your overhead, your SCADA made switches, your inter, teleruptors and your reclosers. And then you get into the cap bank automation, your software integration and your metadata. Which is three eighty-three, and of course, the communication to the field devices, which is communication, three ninety-seven. So that gives you a broad categories, there could be some other FERC accounts within there, just so you understand. Outage management system, it's all software related for the most part, so we're capturing the software here, three eighty-three. And then your AMI mesh network, which is mainly starts in the substation and it is for the meter system. So three seventy is your meters. So I hope that helps give you a good picture. So then we go over to the profit and loss statement, you've seen it many times when I present the financials. I have these numbers here, those are your FERC numbers, just so you understand the categories. And if you understand the FERC accounting, you can understand exactly what expense is related to what. So power supply and transmission, which is our biggest expense. The, the energy or the fuel, as we call it, and the capacity is under five fifty-five, and the transmission is separated under five sixty-five. And then you get into your operations, so specifically your labor and some expenses that are related to the operations team. You know, performing their job, so five eighty is your, basically your supervision and your engineering, so line foreman. And engineers, and the load dispatching is your control room operators. Your station technicians is five eighty-two, your overhead line expenses, so this is when the. The line operations goes out and they're patrolling the lines, or they're in training, or any kind of general construction that doesn't fall somewhere else. And that's the other thing to understand about FERC, so they give you these great categories and buckets, but they say. When it doesn't fall there, you kind of have to group it in, in a miscellaneous category. So five eighty-six is your meter technicians and five eighty-eight, so there's that miscellaneous, miscellaneous distribution expense. So what we found very appropriate years back is your materials management and your personal protective equipment, so this is basically. Anything to do with managing, managing the stock and the inventory goes under this five eighty-eight, so your purchasing also goes there. So then you go to your maintenance, your labor and expenses for maintenance, so five ninety-three is a very common category because it's all the overhead. Construction or maintenance of the lines, so your line operations, your police detail. While, you know, the linemen are out there and your tree trimming goes under five ninety-three. Five ninety-four is the same situation, but it's the underground lines. Five ninety-five specifically for maintenance of line transformers, so your testing and your hazardous waste of the actual transformers. And five ninety-eight is the maintenance of miscellaneous distribution plant, and basically what we put here is all of the operations. Time off, leave time, anytime they take, so we can categorize that and capture it in one, one account. So then you have your general and administration expenses, so this is all your office administration support, and specifically, FERC wants to understand. What is it? What is the expense for actually handling customers, their accounts, you know, speaking to customers. Sending out bills, so nine oh three is your customer collection, so that's your customer service, your billing, credit and collections. All the related processing fees for taking in payments, your bank fees, envelopes, invoices, letterhead mailing, postage services. Which is sending out all the bills, and then your uncollectible accounts is the nine oh four, right there is your bad debt. So then you have your sales expense, which is integrated resources and what they do, their team. So that's their labor and expenses, and then of course, the rebates, the energy and electrification efforts through. With, with all the rebates expenses for the customers. So then you go down to your administrative and general expenses, which is a very broad category, I understand. So nine twenty, that captures many salaries, accounting, business and finance, community relations. Engineering and operations, management staff and support staff, general manager, human resources and your information technology. So in further describing the administrative and general expenses, nine twenty-one captures just office supplies. Nine twenty-three is the outside services, any consultants, legal and training. Nine twenty-four speaks specifically to property insurance and it captures all, all property insurance, auto, crime, employment, liability and property. Nine twenty-five is your injuries and damages, any claims or insurance related to that. Nine twenty-six employee pensions and benefits, so that's a very big category, you know, all your benefits to your employees, dental health, ICAH life. Then you have your OPEP obligations and your pension, any sick buyback, unemployment, workers comp. So that's a big category there. Nine thirty, I will get back to because it's very large. Nine thirty-one is your rent, nine thirty-three, all the expenses it takes to maintain our vehicles and our fleet. Nine thirty-five, another big expense and it's broken down into two pieces, although it's in one. So you have maintenance of your building and the maintenance of your tech, technology infrastructure. So the building maintenance is all the facilities, any kind of repairs, cleaning, heating and cooling, your landscaping to all the substations. Safety and security of the buildings and, and of course, the utilities. Technology maintenance, which has come a long way in the years, of course, because automation is expensive, right? So any kind of security, software maintenance and support and miscellaneous desktop supplies that come with operating our IT infrastructure here. So nine thirty, so this is, this is one that's started a big question on the budget. So it's important for you to understand the amount of detail that goes into it, now these are specifically. Miscellaneous general expense is specific to FERC, that is exactly their, their category and description. So within this, so again, this is anything that doesn't belong somewhere else. And we work very hard, we constantly research to identify where everything belongs, the important part to understand is the reporting is consistent. So when you look at the, when you look at the profit and loss, it should be consistent year to year where we have bucketed, where we have put. Funds in different buckets, we have identified some areas where we moved around and we made that note, just so you understand. So in this broad category is your computer, uh, community relations efforts. Anything that, you know, we, we reach out to the customers, historical calendars. Your memberships to Rotary and Chamber, press releases, promotional items. The public power expenses, the school education programs, this art contest, for example. And any kind of seasonal decor that we, but that we deem necessary. Your copy or leasing, dues and subscriptions, which are expensive, MEEM, APPA and NEPA. Employee assistance programs, employee recognition, printing, training materials. And manuals, recruiting expenses, of course, to bring in talent, advertising, background checks. Storm preparation and management, which of course, we did that today and we're preparing for tomorrow, so you'll see those expenses. All of your telephone services go under this account and the town of Reading services. We get billed for that once a year, all the services that the town of Reading provides to the RMLD. To help us get through our day to day with the cash transactions. Oh, and that's it, I believe, sorry.
Thanks Wendy.
Yes, of course.
And that nine thirty item was from that meeting that we, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you.
So now we get that big chart, I'm gonna know exactly what every single line means going forward. Perfect, alright.
Excellent.
I'll have a little cheat card in my wallet, whip that out. Six thirty-one, got it.
But I do have on, just so you understand, on the. The profit and loss, I do have all of those categories listed, so maybe now, and when you look at it, you may actually be able to relate a little better.
Thank you. Would anybody have any objection to omitting policy updates this evening?
No.
There we go, we can add.
I don't object, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Can I just ask a question, is there a reason, because I'm, because we spent so much time. We spent so much time on power supply, we kind of got behind on the updates for the policies, so we've been working really, really hard to.
You know, there's, there's a couple in there that had a lot of changes, you know, I. You know, I don't want to go too hours, quite frankly.
I think that you'd see a lot of red lines in Paulo O'Leary's here for the procurement, I mean. In general. There are not as many changes as more like in the, in the. The procurement ones, the major changes are really because the policies were written in a procedure format and we're just taking the procedures out. And just making them into policy, there's not really a lot of changes. And like the fraud one, for example, we have a long term Vin Cameron fraud, fraud memo. And we're trying to get that one done because the auditor had asked us to put something in a more formal policy format. And that's, so there's a, there's a few of them that I think. Need to be done, I, I don't think they're as bad as.
Well, let's, I guess, let's, let's take them one at a time, you know, I just want to set a timeline, I'm, I'm sorry, you know.
Alright, let me do the most.
Yeah, let's, let's just say by nine o'clock, we're going to executive session at the latest.
Okay, alright. Go, okay, I'll do the quickest ones first.
Please.
So let's do the anti-fraud. So in your packet, you got a memo that was written by Vin Cameron, who was a previous GM. And that's kind of what the utility had been using from anti-fraud. Memo. That's not Vin Cameron's, this is the new one, so I recommended to do an anti-fraud policy to make it more formal. And this is what Wendy said that the, the auditors were looking for as well, it's a very standard anti-fraud template. And it is in line with the fraud memo that was here, it just more aligns with the law, and that's the end of it. In your packet, you would have gotten the old Vin Cameron memo, so it's just being turned into a formal policy.
But what's the difference then, what, between a memo and a policy?
The policy just gets in a little bit more into the details of the law. Whereas the then one was kind of just kind of broad stroked.
This is policy ten, from what I understand.
Yeah, we had a policy ten that got dissolved, so we renumbered it, we, we used policy ten.
Some value here?
Sure.
So every, every year, the audit, the auditors come in and they ask us if we're making employees aware that we have an identified. Policy or fraud, anything that says, you know, this is what we expect of the employees, so this actually will go a long way with the audit, just so you understand.
So the Vin Cameron fraud was just like a very general description of what fraud is. This policy puts it into policy format with who's responsible, the training that's required, like a regular policy.
To what would be the, does someone have to take an online class? Say, every year?
No, what happens with, so what the auditor was concerned about was that we just had this memo and it. We wanted to make it into a board governing policy and all policies, when they're approved. Janet takes them, they get sent out to all of the employees, they have to read them and acknowledge them and send them back. There are certain policies that we go beyond that acknowledgement and we actually have training. So this will probably fall into that category.
So, so my question here is, you know, maybe I didn't see it here, but is there any provision here for a whistleblower? Whistleblower provision, I mean, should, should that be included here? If somebody comes forward?
I mean, a whistleblower is a. Is allowed by law, so you, you want us to specifically write it in there?
Well, I don't know, I mean, I'm just wondering if, it should be somewhere in here. I mean, I, I think probably employees probably would not go look up the law, they'll probably look up the policy first.
Right.
It, it is, and then there's, there's a statement in here about. It seems chubby employee misconduct.
I'm sorry, what section you want, Bob?
I'm, I'm looking at section C.
Under three?
Under, under three and the responsibilities. You know, I, I'm just seeing that, that doesn't seem to be cor- corresponding. You know, I, I'm just seeing that, that doesn't seem to be corresponding to fraud. Maybe I'm misinterpreting that, but I'm just, I'm just seeing that. It looks like a, a little bit broader than, I, to me, fraud is financial based. And not misuse of materials, you know, that, that, that seems to follow underneath. You know, if you were using it for another job, yeah, but, you know, writing like equipment to do something else.
Well, in, in the eyes of the auditor and the eyes of the law, that would come under the definition of fraud. That's why we took the memo and ran it through legal and expanded on the definition of fraud of how it would relate.
That's, that's, that, yeah, well, you expanded on it.
Mr. Chair, ever related question?
Yes, please, Dave.
Does this, does it ever specify the role of the commissioners?
No, I'm not, I'm not seeing.
For not committing fraud?
No.
We have H D here, but we don't have the commissioners and that we do show up in the, like the anonymous complaints policy as having a role. I'm just wondering, you know, what, why would it not then be in here? Kind of dovetails with what Phil just said a minute ago. Seems like they, they could be related, you know, these, these two different policies. Or they should maybe, they should refer to each other in some way.
I guess I have to think about that. The anonymous letters are being directed towards employees, including, you know, GM or the human resources director. And in certain circumstances, the board takes, requires certain actions to be taken. The RMLD, all of these policies are board policies.
Right, but I mean, this one doesn't actually say where do we fall in terms of reporting or what our responsibility is or when we would be triggered and be involved in any allegation or any instance, you know, what, at what point do we have some role? And what would we do? Seems like that needs to be in here. Or, or do we have no role, in that, in which case it would be E, Board of Commissioners has no role in this policy, but something. I mean, what's legal say?
I, I, yeah, I, I just find that, that the definition of fraud in the memo is very, very much a financial base. In, in, in the memo from, from Vinnie, and then we come down into the definitions in section two, and I find it, it, it's, 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 it's different, you know. It, it, it expands on acts involving dishonesty, deception. I believe bribery, forgery, corruption, theft, conspiracy, embezzlement, misappropriation. But there's some other, other items that have, that are in there that I don't, I don't, I don't think are appropriate in the broad scope.
Mr. Chair, maybe I would just, given the discussion, maybe we're not ready to
Yeah.
vote on this, but maybe we go to the other one and get that out of the way.
Sorry. Yeah, a good, good point, Dave.
Okay. Wendy, did you have to chime in on that? Because I know that we, we ran this by the auditor about the definition of fraud and then expanding it to everything that comes under the word fraud. Do you want to say anything before we make some notes and?
Would it be okay if I, if I did send this to the auditor? Would you, would you guys feel better about that or?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would agree to send it to the auditor.
Okay.
The auditor, I would agree with that, yeah.
Is that okay, Colleen?
Of course, yeah. But I want to make sure I get the comments straight. You think, so we want to have some kind of whistleblowing, even though it says to report.
Maybe ask the auditor what our role is.
We can ask commissioners' roles, yeah.
It could be just as simple, you know, you got under section, what section am I under here? Under section three, under the director of, you know, human resources. Maybe there, maybe there just needs to be a paragraph added that says all whistleblower laws or procedures will be respected. Something simple like that. Maybe gets added there, because you're saying that they come, they come to the, that person and maybe there's need to be some sort of whistleblower provisions will, will be respected or something like that there in that section.
And, and if they can review scope of where there might be a crossover between an HR policy and the fraud policy, just to limit it to, limit it down. Okay. So what, what do you think would be the next easiest one?
I thought that was going to be pretty easy, but. The, I guess the next one is the use of voluntary sick banks, which really didn't have any changes to it. We just changed the title of HR manager to HR director. So that was just more of just a three-year review and, and just signature update. So there's no changes to that one. Do you want to? That's the only change.
Yep, it's, it's a good policy. I think it's a, a great thing that Reading Light offers to employees, to one another, that you can share. Right? If that's, if that's how I'm, I'm understanding this policy. Can you, you can, you can provide sick time from one employee to another?
Yes. For, for certain circumstances, correct.
Yep, that's, that's very admirable.
So you, you ready for the motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Policy fourteen, move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy fourteen, use of voluntary sick banks as presented on the recommendation to general manager.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye.
Okay, the, the non-union management compensation and benefits. This one had a bunch of title changes, again, HR manager to director. ICMA was changed to the, the legal name of ICR four fifty-seven. For tuition reimbursement, we added a three-hour minimum requirement. Overtime, we just clarified on the FSLA laws. And we clarified on non-exempt rate in accrual. The longevity was in the policy before, actually gave the amounts. And since that changes with each of the contracts, we, it basically mirrors the IBW contract. So instead of having to go back and changes, the changing the numbers, if the numbers change each year of the three years of a contract, we just said to refer to the contracts. So those are the only changes in that. We have five minutes left and Paul is here. We can try to, if that one's okay, there was no other changes.
On the comp, there was no changes to comp time. I, I, I don't know how many, how many, you only have eight exempt employees.
We have, we have grade levels that are considered exempt and non-exempt. But then you have your, we added the IT director and the HR director are now considered exempt, not entitled to these benefits. So those are the only things added.
Which, which affects how many employees, so, so in total? How many people are now excluded from this benefit?
Four.
And so four employees are excluded from all, of comp time and longevity.
Not from longevity, from comp time.
Okay.
You want a motion, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please, Phil.
Okay. Move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy twenty-one, non-union management compensation and benefits after sending on the recommendation to general manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Let's go to the right.
And Talbot, aye, sorry, I was muted.
Good. Two, you got two minutes.
We had two minutes, surplus material, very quickly. And Paulo O'Leary is here, she's our chief procurement officer, so if you had any detailed questions. But in policy two, we, we changed the language so that we, we are going to follow the IG in section three to conduct a reasonable investigation using the best available sources in determining the fair market value, where the language before just says determine fair market value. So we're going to use the IG process. In section four, we change, we re-categorize some of the values, moderate is being more than five hundred, it's more than a thousand. And the nominal was changed to less than five, from less than five hundred to less than a thousand. And that's frankly, because the cost of the equipment that we have, it has increased. So those were values that aligned with, of how we categorize them. In section six, we had a first right of refusal that used to say that we would take the equipment and we would offer it in a rotating basis to each of the towns. And we have been doing that for a while and no one ever takes us up on it. So we're taking that equipment and put it into a municipal. And that includes the trucks too. No one has wanted any trucks. And now that the D O E R has new fuel policies, most of the things that we're getting rid of are just traded in. They don't really have much value left, but we're not rotating them around the towns. They will go on municipal and if the town needs something, they can take it off a municipal. And the last section we change is, remember the quarterly review schedule that we put out? That we said, this is what we're going to give, give you updates on every quarter. This got changed to say that it's a quarter, quarterly review, although we do put any surplus material in the board packet monthly. So you get it in the board packet monthly, but we will do a quarterly review. And that's policy two, changes.
Phil, if you could, please.
You want a motion?
Yes, please.
Move that the Board of Commissioners approve policy two, surplus materials presented on the recommendation to general manager.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Pacino, aye.
Marlena Bida, aye.
Mr. Talbot, aye.
Mr. Colter, aye. Okay, at this point, well, let's table the other ones until our next session.
Bring nine and then the fraud comments back from the auditor on the next meeting.
Yes, please. Okay. And so let's plan our next session, which is on March twenty-fourth. That is okay? With everybody?
Yep.
Okay. All right. So let's move over to executive session. Phil, if you could read the motion.
Move that the Board of Commissioners go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Laws, Chapter one sixty-four, Section forty-seven D exemption from public records and open new requirements to certain instances to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategy with respect thereto and to return to regular session for the sole purpose of adjournment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Talbot, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Pacino, aye.
Erica, can you just send me that link again for the executive? Because I don't know if the one I was using.
Yeah, maybe me too. I could, I kind of had a hard time finding the main meeting one too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Adjournment, all right.
Good night.
Board of Commissioners.
Do you notice?
All right, thank you.